But as far as even the repairs and what, I think it's relevant to know how much material you're putting on certain roads each year, where it's going, complaints that are coming in from the residents, just a good way to capture in general what the feel of it is. Let's just move on then to the current status of primarily Lindell Road drainage project and then the Lindbergh pavement.
Lindell is complete. We, me and a couple of the other guys went out and made some adjustments to the core rock swale coming out of the field. I should build pictures and video of that working. It had that heavy rain, so I ran right up there to make sure it was working. And that's working beautifully now. So that is complete and the Lindbergh Road project is complete with no issues.
Okay. And I saw your recommendation to pay the bills.
Yeah, they had recently submitted revised invoices to partial payments. I don't remember the exact amount, but yeah, the contractor had requested payment on two. So I think we'll get those hopefully scheduled for the next committee meeting and get them paid for, at least, a partial of what they've done. There's still a substantial...
We'll carry those to the October.
There's about a 10% retainage being held on the contract until they submit closeout documents, maintenance bond. So there's a decent amount of money being held still.
Well, that's good. And how about a quick update on the Ridge Road project? I know we were going to submit the plans to the state.
Yep. So the plans have been submitted to the state. They're under review. This is for the two sections of Ridge Road that you've received grants for. So the design is complete, submitted to DOT, and they're under review now. So as soon as we get the green light from DOT, then we can schedule the public bidding of those projects and get them built.
Do you think that will come in under the grant money that we have, right?
That's, our initial cost estimate is that the grant money will cover the construction cost. Fuel prices are rising, asphalt prices are rising, so we'll have to keep, you know, keep an eye on that moving forward. But right now, I estimate that we're under the contract now, or under the revenue amount.
Okay. Let's move on then to the recommended memo package that we all sent. So we had asked our engineer and our supervisor here to give us a list of the top candidate roads in town. These are municipal roads that could best benefit from a chip seal process. And then we also asked to put those in priority order with estimated costs and the total effort to prepare for that work, along with a lead time. So all of you have that front of you. And what we want to do now is just kind of just talk about the method, how you got for this list, what are some of the assumptions in it, and how you would advise us to proceed.
Well, I think the biggest thing we did was amount of money invested in the roads from the last, obviously, 12 years. We paved Snyder Town, three quarters of Snyder Town, and Woodville Road back in October of 2007. So now they're showing the signs of age. So, you know, to save the investment, the grant money, what the township ourselves had put in, we suggest sealing those up now so we can get another five or seven years, hopefully, of life out of those roads before we have to make another significant investment. And then Cider Mill, back in 2014, after we had a really, really cold winter and had a lot of frost, the DPW put a significant amount of work and time into that road, overlaying and repairing some soft spots and some damaged spots in the roadway. Same with Grabowski. We've been working on Grabowski every spring for a lot of years. And Bounce Station, because we've put, we've put time and money into that, and it's a short piece, and it's in good shape. We got it, all but one pothole corrected. So, you know, it's a good road to chip seal now.
Jason, Bounce Station, is that our responsibility in its entirety?
From Wagner Road to the railroad trestle.
It's ours?
Yeah.
Even though the other side is Delaware?
Right. Now, like Haynes Road, one side is Delaware, one side is ours. Delaware takes care of Haynes Road.
Okay.
Dunker Church, the same way. Delaware takes care of Dunker Church. That's the, you know, longstanding agreement.
And Stony Brook from Snyder Town down, Popeye takes care.
Correct. Yeah. And then, you know, they also take care of Mountain Church, which, you know, one side of that is ours as well.
Hey Jason, could I go back to Grabowski for a sec?
Sure.
The part that you're proposing to chip seal is the part that you have to fix every year, or the...
The whole thing. It would be the whole thing. We have to repair the, overlay the end near Boss, so where they stop that repair to the intersection. Continue those repairs down by the Parents Farm and down by Whitney Drive. Those few little repairs left to be made. Get some of those rough, real rough spots smoothed out and then seal it up.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Back Brook has been paved from one end to the other, so that's starting to show little cracks. And Induction Zion have been paved in the last six years, you know, Zion just two years ago. So those are easy ones. We don't have to do anything to those. They're just starting to show the shrinkage cracks and the normal things roads do, oxidation, and they'd be good candidates to protect now so that we don't have to make a major repair to them in the near future.
So when we, just to piggyback on what Jason's saying, when we took a look at some of these roads, we really tried to target roads that are currently in what you would call fair to good condition, because those make the ideal candidates for chip seals. If they're really in poor condition, chip seal's not going to do any good, like Rick said. It's not a structural fix to a road. It's more of a seal coat. And when you look at a brand new road, typically, industry standard says typically after about 10 to 12 years really is when you start to see a steep decline in the condition of the road. It really starts to deteriorate. So we tried to target roads that, in that 10-year range, it's been, it's been resurfaced within the last 10 years. So we're right at that sort of precipice of it's going to start deteriorating, so let's get it sealed now. So that's sort of how we came up with this list. And each of them are in varying conditions, I guess, of repair currently. And you can see, you know, with some of Jason's notes, where some roads require a little bit more attention now to make them satisfactory candidates for that chip seal versus others that are tailor-made to be chip sealed right now. So it's, we try to encompass as wide a cross-section of roads as we could within reason. I mean, it's no, it's no secret if you, if you take a look at the roads in the township, and Jason had a, had a list that was probably twice as long, probably almost 20 roads that could be viable chip seal candidates. So we tried to pare them down and give you guys what we felt was the best sampling of roads. But you can make an argument that there's twice as many roads out there that need to be chip sealed. And then right on, right on down the line, one thing I can tell you with the list that you have is we try to not target some of the subdivision roads, because I've just found, and I think we both agree, that when you go into subdivisions and do the chip seal process, it tends to lead to a lot of complaints with the dust, with the loose stones, with the fact that you're having a rough surface. So some of the subdivision roads, the Danbury type roads, we didn't even look at those roads right now for chip seal. There are other processes that could be contemplated, but I wouldn't recommend the straight chip seal. So we didn't, we didn't look at those as part of this.
Well, to do all of the roads on this list, as of 262-327, we have about 100, I believe, in the budget this year. If we had 100 in the budget next year, you have 200 of the 262.
There's 100 in capital, but 50 of that pays for the soft costs for the Ridge Road project. So you really only have 50.
Okay. That makes...
That's the thing. When you have a grant, we still have to pay those, the engineering, the inspections, all those soft costs. So you put the 100 in the capital, 50 is to cover the soft costs of the Ridge Road project. 50 is set aside for chip seal, you know, reconstruction for the ordinance, you know, encumbrance, all that.
And the soft costs, Jason, we don't recover. That's just...
Right. That's the, you get the grant for the, for the building of the road, but the soft cost, the engineering, inspection, all that is, is our, we have to pay that.
You know, do we have anything coming up next year? If we put up the same 100 in the budget next year, do we have anything coming up next year that would eat into that 100, or would that 100 be free and available to do this?
We're going to apply for another grant for next year. Whether we get it or not, we won't know until they award. But we always apply, every year we apply for a grant. So we were out looking at two different roads that are possible candidates for a grant that fit the criteria for a grant. So if you did get another grant, you would need that 50 to cover.
Which two roads?
Lindell Road and Melissa's Road.
Okay. And if we got that grant, when would we know we got the grant? The grant applications are due early October, October 8th.
Of this year.
Of this year. You would know probably by January or February.
Okay. So then...
State would know. These soft costs would be in 2019 for, for that particular project, if we got that money? 2019. Yes. Okay. So the good news is if we get a grant, we can do a road top to bottom, structural, in layman's terms. The bad news is that would assume eat into about $50,000 of 100 for you. And so it may be that we have as little as 100 over the next two years to do this without changing what we did this year. Now, there may be things we can do to put more money into that, but I don't think there are going to be things that we can do that could put a huge amount more money into that. And then the question becomes, do you want to borrow to do this, assuming there are no other grants? And you had some conversations with somebody in the governor's office about potentially getting money, but assuming that doesn't come, we can do 100 of the 262 without borrowing. And from what I've just heard, the roads on this list aren't all the roads that you'd like to chip seal. There is a, there is a more extensive list of other roads that would be viable candidates, correct? And how long will those other roads remain viable candidates before they get to the point where chip seal doesn't make sense anymore?
That's tough to say. Yeah, that's tough to say. If we have mild winters, or we have another winter with a foot and a half of frost in the ground, and then a wet and warm quick thaw, that's what really hurts the roads.
What I would like to see, maybe I'm a little more process oriented. I think what I would like to see on this moving forward is, Jason, you've got a broader list. Is there not Bill, some way you can do some sort of mathematical ranking, where we pick a series of attributes that are critical in making a determination, we put a numerical number on each of those attributes, and then we basically use that as a prioritization? Because right now, I still, I mean, this is helpful, because if we know the cost, and we're hearing your expert opinion, but it would be interesting to see if we could actually do that to triage, because I think we are going to have some budgetary, we just can't tackle everything at once. Even these prep times, Jason, you know with the cure period, we're not going to be able to do this, because I think, Bill, you said ideally it's got to be done by, you know, late, late, late October, I think it was. It depends on weather, but...
Depending on the weather, typically, mid to late October. It's usually the, as long as you want to stretch this out, because once it starts getting cooler, it just doesn't have the adhesion to the existing road surface.
Some of these automatic...
This is a next year project.
Oh, yeah.
And plus there's some synergies in putting roads together and putting them out to bid as a bigger package. But I thought this was the priority. Do I have that wrong? I thought, I mean, we don't, yeah, this is the priority.
Correct. That's our recommendation.
And so if we, if we had $50,000 to spend and only 50, we would pick Snyder Town, because that's number one on the list. So the way I read, the way I understand this is we're ideally to go in the order that they appear on this list.
That's our recommendation, yes.
Unless, unless something drastically changes to the road over there.
Which means without, if we have $100,050 this year, 50 next, we can do the first three. That's $90,000 and change. We could get those, and maybe Bounce Station, we could get four done. We'd have to hop over Grabowski, because that's expensive road.
Yeah.
For Grabowski, I mean, that's the road I run the most. That road, I have to believe, if that's not chip sealed in the next couple of years, it's going to drop off the list as a chip seal candidate.
Is there any benefit when you go to bid on having the roads be contiguous? That is, Grabowski, Bounce Station, and Boss are all, in a sense, in a long...
It may help a little. I think it's, it's a function of if, if all you're doing are those three roads, it may help. But if, if you're doing other roads in the township, I think they're all still local enough to where you're going to realize. I think it's just all a function of how much money the contract is worth. You know, if it's a $50,000 worth of chip seal and it's, it's roads a couple miles apart, I don't think you're going to have that much cost savings by having them be next to each other. But as you get higher up, you're going to see bigger unit price savings.
I mean, the reason I ask, I mean, you're right, Rick. And this is supposedly the rank order, but if I looked at it based on man-hours to prep the road, which would indicate to me that it needs more work potentially, there's something underlying that needs to be resolved. Number two only needs 80 hours. You go to number four, it needs 240 hours.
But Kevin, Woodsville is less than half the distance. So on a per, you know, per-linear foot, maybe that Woodsville is as bad as Snyder Town. Snyder Town is more than twice as long.
Yeah. I get that. But I mean, even this, you would think it would go, we can debate it. It doesn't really matter. Just another way, I would like to see some other sort of attributes that were qualifying as something. It seems like we have time to do that.
We do, because we don't...
Because we're not doing anything this season, if you will. And Bill, maybe you've done that in other municipalities.
Yeah, we have. There's, there is a rating criteria that the New Jersey Public Works Handbook has a rating criteria, where you can actually go out and walk every road and physically inspect them and assign numerical rankings to a bunch of different categories. The amount of cracking, the type of cracking.
That's what we're talking about.
And then you can categorize. But it takes time.
Yeah. I'm actually hoping to get into that class in Rutgers at the, at fall, because they offer it for free. It's the rated class. They teach you how to go out and actually break through.
But this is great. This, this basically dovetails back into having some sort of master road file, where you actually, at least annually, can go out and do an inspection. I don't know. You pick the time, Jason, depending on availability of resources. But I think there would be some potential benefit there. I mean, you're right, Rick. I mean, if you look at the second one, it's, it's a lesser distance. You go down, you look at the fourth one, I mean, it's, chip seal cost is about the same as the first. It's almost 240 hours versus 280. But it'd be nice just to see something else driving it. I don't, are there any residents on these roads that are prioritized that would like to...
Snyder Town Road.
Snyder Town.
Snyder Town.
And I like to make a couple comments if I could.
That's true.
If Snyder, if Snyder Town is...
Got to give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joe Santa Wasser. My wife Donna. We're on 98 Snyder Town Road. We've been here since the road was a dirt road. We started the home in 68, moved in in 1970. So we've seen it when it was dirt and you put calcium chloride down. Eventually it was chipped. Is there any reason that can't be blacktoped, like the top half of Snyder Town was? Instead of, instead of chips, that would be one question I guess we would have. The second question is, it's a racetrack in the summer this time of the year with the ladies, I guess, leaving the swim club at the Colonial, probably at four o'clock with their children, trying to get home to, to make dinner. And the, and the road is really a racetrack past Snyder Town. So the other question I have is, could we put a speed bump in there? And I think I spoke with Tim about that. Some way we've got to slow these cars down. It's, it's really dangerous to be out on that road. The locals will probably slow down a little bit. I think it's the people coming from the swim club that are not. So I would like to see a speed bump in there, if that's possible. Would like to see a blacktop, if that was possible.
Well, if we don't do something, maybe you will have an automatic speed bump, some sort of.
Be surprised. When does it slow people down either?
The bicycles are another issue, but what they're going to do to themselves is going to be worse than they're going to do to you, probably.
We're going to tackle the bicycles. That's on the radar screen also. That's next.
I don't know how you're going to slow down a bicycle.
We're going to, we have a lot of issues with the bicycles. We're going to tackle that.
Well, we, we have not found the bicycles to be bad, other than the fact that you need to look both ways when you cross the road, because they can run over you. They're traveling at a, at a pretty good velocity, too.
Yes, Kevin, thank you. Tim, thank you for your Bob Forsyth 100 Snyder Town Road. These are my next-door neighbors. And we thank you for the calls a few days ago, and reguard to this meeting tonight. My, my concern is identical to, excuse me, Bob and Donna's, but the bicycles, we had a, we had a wreck, the bicycle racing, which was approved, one of these tours. And the bicycles, they go down there at 35, 45 miles an hour at least, and downhill. We had a, you know, had, had a accident, and all the, you know, EMTs are coming out, because a lady broke her leg, got off the road. The road itself is very narrow, as we talked about. And for the most part, there's like one inch just gullies on it, unprepared gullies. You can't even see them. And if you get off that road, you know, you're gone this way. So my thinking is, if you're going to do some chipping or whatever, is to just, you know, get the gullies a little more, you know, smoother, so you know, you just don't lose it, if that makes any sense.
Jason, and I'd like, can you explain the difference in cost between chip seal and a blacktop overlay?
Chip seal on a typical road in East Danwell is $25,000 a mile. An overlay is closer to $100,000 a mile, about $98,000 a mile.
Can everything be done, what can it be graduated into the side of the road?
Well, we could look and see how the drainage flows.
It's got to be dug and...
Yeah, yeah. So it's probably not just as simple as putting some course down in there to take the, I've been stuck in those ditches in the snow, so I'm very wary.
Snyder Town is, it's a dangerous...
It's narrow, and if there's some straight section in it...
And the speeds that these people travel on.
We've been out there for trees down late at night, and yes, the people leaving the swimming club or what it is, are a little on the careless side.
Is there a reason that you stopped blacktopping at the top of Snyder Town, or at the top of, around, around 88?
Yeah, that for whatever reason, I was here literally two months back then. Yeah, I just started. They didn't go from end to end. I don't know what...
We don't, we don't know the history.
I, I mean, I could reach out to the old engineer or somebody and see if I can get the answer. I don't know if it was a money thing. I, I don't know why.
Well, about a year ago, Snyder Town, just above 98 where we live, there was a lot of markings on the road in, in fluorescent paint.
Those are the bicycles, usually.
I, I, we didn't do that.
It looked like it was where the road was really damaged and you were going to do something there, but nothing ever happened with it.
It could be the bicycle clubs marked up.
Yeah, they'll mark...
Bad areas?
Yeah.
In pink or green.
Then that's what it was then. I thought it was the township that did it. You were going to do something, because it was a real bad area.
The other issue with the blacktop overlay, it's four times the cost of the chip seal. The other problem is, is if your base isn't good, if the road base isn't good, spending the money to do a blacktop overlay, in a few years, the blacktop overlay is going to start cracking. And the problem with a lot of our roads, they were dirt. They just put chip seal or blacktop over the dirt. And when you have a dirt road, you need a steep crown, because you want the water to run off the dirt as quickly as possible.
Well, that's the way Snyder Town was in the, in the late 60s and early...
That's not really what you want when you blacktop, that crown that's steep. But a lot of our roads have an incredibly steep crown. That's why we go for grants where we can tear out everything and start anew with the road, so that we can put in a proper crown. And we can put in a proper base. And that way, when you put down blacktop, you're going to get 20 or 25 years. You blacktop over a bad base, and in four or five years, your money's wasted. You're back to a mess. And it could even be worse, because then the blacktop starts peeling off. Then when the plow's plowed, it winds up in your yard. So really, if, if the base on Snyder Town is bad, it's either chip seal or tear the road out and start fresh. Ridge, we're tearing the road out and starting fresh. We got a grant. But that's costing $250,000 a mile?
$225.
$225 a mile, or nine times the cost of chip seal. But that's the right way to do these roads. But we can only do that when we get grants. We can't put $500,000 in the budget to do a two-mile road. So that, that's the problem with the blacktop. The overlay just won't work on a lot of our roads. They're too far gone.
Well, but chip seal has not been bad. I mean, it, it's, it's a relatively good road. Is that what they call an MC2 road or an MC3 road? McCadam Class 2? Was that the terminology for chip seal?
I haven't heard it. I have not heard it called that, no.
Well, it works.
Maybe, maybe.
It's, it's not a bad surface in front, in front of the home. It does, it holds down the dust, unlike it was before. But the problem with myself, and I guess Bob, is, is the speed of the automobiles coming down that hill, because that's a relatively long grade from the top of, I call it, top of Snyder Town, from about 88 down to the bridge.
We're having speeding issues throughout East Danwell. Tim and I are now dealing with a couple of residents on Wordsville Road who have been emailing us about speeding on Wordsville. We've received emails from other residents about speeding. It's a real problem in the township. And we don't have our own police force. We do borrow West Danwell. We only get a few hours a week. And they'll only sit basically near the Ringo's Village. They won't go further out than that, because they don't want to be too far away from West Danwell, in case they have to answer a call in West Danwell. So that's another difficult issue, is the speeding. People are driving too fast for these narrow, windy country roads. And a lot of times, if you look at the license plates, they're not even New Jersey license plates. They're Pennsylvania license plates. People are using these things as shortcuts. I don't know what the viability of the speed bump is. I'll let our, our guys up there, I mean, what are, what, what's involved with the speed bump?
DOT has certain requirements that need to be met to put speed humps in. And the speed hump is a more gradual. They're, they're usually 10 to 12 feet wide and around three inches high. It's traffic volume-based, it's speed-based, and it's slope-based. So typically, you, you can't have a road that's very busy, basically. Normally, it has to be less than a 30 mile an hour speed road, and a grade is less than 8%. So if you meet those three, then technically DOT doesn't have a problem with you putting them on the roads. But it's like anything else, they come with pros and cons. You know, they have been proven to be effective in, in most cases at slowing down traffic. But depending on where you put the humps, certainly there's that noise factor. People slowing down, hammering their brakes, hitting the humps, and then speeding up and taking off. Emergency services don't like them.
No.
Fire trucks, rescue squads, police, don't like them. Snowplows. So it's, it's sort of a, it's an ongoing debate that towns have.
Because I had four of them in Delaware Township that I was aware of, six years ago.
Sandbrook Road.
And they are gone. They were on Severn's Way. They were on that road that runs along the creek, that road that starts with an A off of 605.
Alex, Alexon.
There were two there. There were two on Severn's Way. Those four are gone.
Sandbrook had some years ago, and they took the names well.
I don't know why.
People complain about the noise a lot, because they're, you know, in the little village over there in Sandbrook. So out in front of your house, just like he said, you have that little bump, and the slowing down, speeding up. Same in Clinton. I was reading an article. They put them in there to try to keep people from using Clinton as a cut through, and 78's backed up. And they put the speed humps in, and now they complain about the noise of the cars.
Well, it's not. You have just so much of the cars, but we have a lot of landscaping vehicles, trucks that hold trailers. When those trailers hit a speed bump, it's loud.
Yeah.
It's very loud. And I know on Severn's Way, because we lived there for a few years in Delaware Township, the other problem was, I guess, some people got so mad at the speed bumps, they were driving across the lawns. So instead of hitting the speed bump, they'd come up to the speed bump turn and go over the lawn, which in wet weather does wonderful things to the person's lawn. Now, the neighbors started doing is putting boulders there, but, you know, now you get into a road war. But I noticed in Delaware Township, all of them that I used to run past are now gone.
The ones on Alexon are actually removable. They would take them out in the winter.
Same with the ones on...
Yeah, I've seen that before.
Is that convenient? It seems like, it seems like it would be pretty inconvenient for you.
Yes, to do that. Yes, to do that.
There's a bunch of them over in Raritan Township, you can see on some of the roads where they're trying to minimize kind of the cross traffic through the main road. Yeah, exactly, the main roads in Delaware. Look, I mean, I'm sympathetic to speeding as well, and the fact that I'm annoyed with it, I mean, I live on a county road. The good thing is, the county road's in nice shape, the bad thing is, that actually accelerates the speed through there. I see routinely cars going through at sixty, seventy miles an hour. So I, I can tell you one thing, a lot of the complaints come in, it's like, well, we want to lower the speed limit. Look, if people don't obey the speed limit sign at any point, putting another one in there at a lower rate's not going to make a bit of difference. I appreciate the bump idea, there are restrictions. The best thing we can do, we keep saying, is move our assets around. So we have West Danwell hopefully look at the road a little bit more frequently, and also can move over the kind of portable, you know, speed meter and the monitor system, that does tend to help for a little while, but right now, that's about as good as it gets, I think. It does help for a little bit.
I think that, I mean, that speed monitor, I think, makes a difference, and I think this, which we got today, shows that. I'll be curious to see, this is Wordsville Road off, this is off our speed monitor.
Yep, yeah.
Our speed monitor has the screen that shows how fast you're going. We're also going to get some information from the county that has the speed monitor without any screen, and compare the two and see if the screen makes a difference. I'll be very curious to see what the comparison is. But my own impression is, in Ringo's, at least in the village, that speed monitor makes a difference. I think people do slow down. And if that's the case, then maybe we should be investing some more money in, because what are they, five thousand each, eight thousand?
Five, yeah.
Five. Maybe we invest some more money in speed monitors and put out some more of the speed monitors. We're trying to get some more time from West Danwell police for speeding. That's proven to be a little more, not a little more, a lot more difficult than we had originally envisioned. Francis had suggested an alternative, which at some point, we're going to pursue as well with another municipality. But the bottom line is, we recognize the speeding issues, that they're not easy for a small town like us to grapple with, but we're trying to figure out ways to grapple with them. Yes?
Yes. The speed monitors, I think, are excellent. I travel back and forth through Hopeful Township, and they have the speed monitors by the Hopewell High School and Timberland Junior High School. They have one going down on Route five-eighteen into Hopewell Borough. And I think these things are wonderful, because these, these speed monitors, they're solar, you know, powered. I don't know what they cost, but I'll tell you, I obey these things, and I make sure my speed is where it should be when it starts flashing at me, you know, getting my speed down. I think, when in Ringo's, I think that's tremendous, the two of them, it's tremendous. It's a great idea, if it can work. And, you know, for Snyder Town Road, I don't know, we have so many trees, they're solar, you know, solar powered, may not work there. Probably not, that's probably not a good idea for Snyder Town Road to have one of those things. But in other areas of the township that may benefit for speed monitors, I obey it, and I think a lot of people do. Coming into Ringo's, get a few more of these around, you know, I think would be great.
I don't think most drivers are inherently bad when they speed, I think a lot of people just aren't thinking. Those speed monitors work on those people. Like you said, you're driving, you see, you look down, you check your speedometer. I think most drivers aren't out there intentionally looking to be reckless. Those that are, there's nothing we're going to do, other than get the police to, you know, sit out there and write tickets. But I do think the speed monitors have an impact on the people who are...
The honest people.
The honest people who just aren't paying attention to their speed. Look, if you're not looking at your speedometer, sometimes it's hard to figure out how fast you're going. And I know, I drive a large pickup truck, you know how fast you're going in that large pickup truck. Then when I get in her smaller car with my pickup truck mentality, you know, I, I can't gauge the speed in her small car. So those kind of monitors help in those situations. You glance down, you say, okay, I'm over the speed limit, or the monitor tells you and you slow down.
From the Safe Streets data that we got back confirms that, right? I mean, we've seen it from, from that actual data.
So we just can't afford them on every street, so we have to prioritize those, you know, but they are effective. I do the same thing you do. I think we could put a photo enforcement sign on the top of it and actually take it up a level.
Well, you could get a picture.
Yeah, exactly. I grabbed a ten piece, it's a camera. So there's a lot, it's a comprehensive strategy, I think.
There's other options for the solar signs too. They make a portable pole mount that would mount a speedway sign or a telephone pole. There's, there's other options than that big solar. I'm sure they're cheaper because there's less parts involved, but they're more affordable. Where you could put it on Snyder Town for a week and then move it to Wagner Road for a week. You could move it around, there's other options that way, from that same company.
How much was the trailer?
It was like seventy-five a mile.
Seventy-five, we only had the one, right?
Yes.
Do we, have we put that speed monitor on Snyder Town in time in the recent past?
No, we didn't, I mean...
Do we have, the one that we had put on Wordsville that we took back, is that one that we could put on Snyder Town for a while?
Yeah.
You guys want it on your road for a while?
As long as we can find a spot.
The summer's about over now, so the women aren't leaving the swim club like they, like they do in June, July, and August, but maybe, maybe it'll help. I really think it's the club, I, I'm not sure that it's the locals.
I'm a member of the club and I know the board, so I'll make sure they communicate to the members, you know, as well as to slow down.
Yeah, they, they want to be good citizens in East Danwell, they should tell their members that this is becoming a bit of an issue. If you have to be somewhere, leave five minutes early, don't go flying down the road.
Well, still, I think, to your earlier point, it'd be good to get a baseline.
You know, this is what's going on now in the fall, and then if we put it back out there in the summer, then...
You can generate some data and make some decisions.
Why don't we, when we, when we have it available, why don't we move one on the Snyder Town Road for a while, see what we get?
I guess we'll put it out tomorrow.
We get these nice, which is actually quite helpful, these nice little charts, this is from Wordsville. I mean, it's, it's, this one is particularly helpful because it shows you the traffic volume by the hour, then the speed. And you can see, you can figure out, for example, people get their ugliest around five P.M. on Wordsville. That doesn't come as a great surprise, but if you look, that's when the speed is around the ugliest. And it, it, it's helpful to see the pattern, so we can produce something like this and look at it in Snyder Town.
So you're thinking from where all the trees fell on the house, from that direction towards...
Yeah, down at the bridge.
That's, okay, I could probably put it in that little corner where that van caught on fire.
Because that, that's, at that point, that's where it's all downhill to Linville. From us. That's about where the paving stops in two thousand seven.
Yeah, there's also a straightaway, a flat straightaway that is a very popular speeding spot too.
Well, I won't make any more comments about a speed bump, but my idea was about four inches high and about six inches wide.
With ninety-degree angles.
And that's, that's about a two mile an hour trip over it.
Or two-hundred thousand dollar litigation.
Well, while we're on the, on Snyder Town resident feedback, I just wanted to summarize some anecdotal information I collected. Mr. Miller and I went out over the weekend and talked to residents on Snyder Town Road, and just wanted to share some of their observations, which some of them, you've already said, so I'll skip over those. Two residents actually were concerned about their dogs if we chip seal, and walking on the roads right after the chip seal. Is there any impact, pet paws?
It's, it's only, it's not hot for very long, it cools right off, and then you're not walking on the oil, you're walking on the stones.
Now, I've never heard, I've heard the concern raised, but I've never heard an actual...
Yeah, these are folks who walk...
Any actual injury to... Well, people are thinking, once you put down the stones and the chips, you're going to have a road that's like sandpaper, so they're worried about the dog's paws, but that's not really how it plays out.
Plus, it's not, you know...
And they get rolled, and so it, it, I, I would think that it would be an issue, assuming you walk your dog on a regular basis, their pads are...
Yeah, we see that, we see the people with the labs out there every time we're down there, it is a, like, group.
That is one of the misconceptions about the chip seal, that if the process isn't well communicated to the public, oftentimes, they mistake it for a newly resurfaced road is coming through, with a nice new mat of hot mixed asphalt like Rick was referring to, and that's not what this process is, it's seal coating the surface, it has a very rough texture. It is proven to extend the life of a road and seal the road, but it's not a, it's not a brandy road surface. And, and that's some of the biggest issues that we run into, is just, you know, people's idea of what it's going to be versus what it ends up showing us.
It's going to be like the driveway, it's McCadam, nice and smooth.
Yeah, yeah, and we try, you know, when we do it in our towns, we're, we're pretty successful, we send notices out. We try to really give a, a very good description, an explanation of what to expect, and we just find that it helps to set their, you know, their expectation going into it. Never perfect, but it helps.
Yeah, and then there are some benefits, like he said, if you look on those websites, that it helps cut down on black ice, because we get that a lot, especially Snyder Town Road, it seems to hold ice because of lack of sun. And you get those thirty-three degree foggy, misty mornings in the wintertime, and you can get icy patches on a smooth road where the chip seal, because it has that variable surface, it eliminates a lot of that. It does give you better traction in the snow and the wet and things like that, so there is some positives out of it too.
Couple other comments residents made were, they were concerned about motorcycles and bicycles on the loose gravel during the first few weeks, would that in any way put them in danger?
They'll sign the road and they'll drop the speed limit to twenty-five, and they'll sign it heavily, you know, loose gravel and stuff like that.
You can see it on five-fourteen, actually, right now, they're getting ready to do that section. And that's part of the process that the...
Yeah, we would write that, write signs.
Look, if you don't do dumb things on your motorcycle, it's not going to be a problem. A motorcycle can take a turn at eighty miles an hour if the road is dry, if there's no oil, if there's no dirt. Motorcycle is not going to take a turn at eighty miles an hour on a chip seal, the bike's going to go right out from underneath you. Any seasoned motorcycle rider knows that, so, you know, it is what it is. I mean, you're going to get idiots no matter, so, but anybody who's sensible knows, you don't take a turn at eighty miles an hour on a motorcycle on a chip sealed road, the bike's going right out from underneath you. And then your leg is sliding on the sandpaper.
Another comment was, someone said, if we're going to do it soon, if it snows, would there be a problem with, again, during the first month, plowing and mixing the stone with the snow and lifting it up?
We can make it a little bit, but if, if the process is done correctly, you get a good contractor, you'll not have a problem.
That, that's part of the reason why I don't think we would recommend doing anything at this point. Because you put it down close to November, I just don't think it's going to have as good a chance of setting up as you would in warmer temperatures, and then you would risk some, some snowplow damage. If it snowed like Jay said, at the right time of year, and it's properly put down, it's going to hold up to clouds.
I had some similar comments to what Mr. Matthews mentioned in regards to the concern about bicycles and motorcycles. So that was a similar comment that we heard, I guess, at either end of the road. But I think in, in addition to that, or maybe similar to that, actually, some people were noting the difference between how they've seen it done in certain areas, like I think the example was given to me about in Hopewell. And this individual's comments were noting how different and well it had been done, you know, for example, in this example in Hopewell versus other areas that they've seen. So are you guys aware, or, you know, what's the best word? Do you have a preference in terms of how this is done? Because I guess my initial impression was, it's all pretty much the same, but in fact, it can be very different?
A lot of it is contractor. It is, and I took a class down at Rutgers this summer, the instructor said, chip seal isn't actually an art form. You have to have a contractor that knows what they're doing. And there are some really good contractors out there, and there's some that we would defer not to usually.
Does that affect the price? Do you see a big difference in the price?
Well, normally, the contractors that we try to avoid are the ones that are, that are cheaper. When you publicly bid this project, we've had success, better success actually, at getting the better contractors as opposed to using some of the co-ops, but the co-op is elective, you know, they, they have their contractor, you don't have to use them if you don't want to use the co-op. But it's just like any road contractor, there's, there's good ones, there's, there's bad ones. We try to write a spec that will result in the best product, as far as the amount of oil that gets put down, the amount of stone that gets put down, and a lot of that's predicated on the existing condition of the road. That has a, but, you know, like Jay alluded to, if you get a good contractor, they're going to be able to make some recommendations on, on the fly that really could help the process as well, as opposed to somebody that's trying to produce, you know, X number of miles a day and not really caring what the end result is, so you have to watch them, but...
And I think, other than that in general, it seemed like the folks who were home, who I actually got these folks to speak to, seemed to be, for the most part, supportive, you know, even though, you know, I was, I tried to be as transparent as possible saying that, you know, we've gotten mixed results in the past, right? And maybe it is based on the contractor, you know, if what was done on Van Loos was not done by, you know, let's say, the best possible contractor, that may have led to more complaints, you know, than, than the average, I guess, so...
I, I will tell you, Pete, I, when Tim told you guys were going door knocking, I said to him, good luck, you're probably going to get handed your head. And then when I talked with him after the door knocking, it sounded like most of the residents you spoke to were very receptive to the idea.
Oh, very much, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have anyone who was negative, no, again, we didn't go to every door, not everyone was home. We went to all the doors, but not everyone was home. So we, I didn't have anyone who said, don't do it. There was a lot of questions, you know, explain it, what is it? But after the conversation, I guess, getting to the communication point, once people understand the value proposition and what the intention is, there was a general support for the process. One other observation I'll bring up has really nothing to do with chip seal, but I think we ought to take this up as an issue at another meeting, is several residents told me there's landscape trucks that pull up on the, on the road and stop on Snyder Town, and then discharge their equipment and go doing their work, and it creates a major safety problem.
Because the road's very narrow for that.
Yeah, so I don't know what we can do about it, but I think we ought to just be aware of it. I heard that from several folks, that it was a very unsafe situation.
But that's a problem throughout East Danwell, when you run the road, you see this stuff, and we have a lot of narrow roads, and people hire landscapers to come and cut their lawn, and the landscaping trucks park on the road, and they're a bit wider with the trailers, and the drivers always aren't, aren't always the most considerate, so it's to pull it over as far as they can, they're a foot or two out, and it does create issues. You got a question?
No, a comment, yes. Twenty-eight years on Snyder Town Road with the, the landscape trailers that are parking, just, you know, you know, getting their equipment on and off, I've never had a problem with that. And on Linville Road, Snyder Town, Linville out to thirty-one, there's, there's trucks that, you know, park there, unloading and just, you know, doing their thing. They pull over far enough where you just slow down, you go around them, I've never had a problem with that at all.
They should have flashers on, just maybe if they can, put a cone on the corners, and that's usually adequate.
Yeah.
Having a part of a treatment.
I've never had a problem with them blocking traffic.
I think the issue is, you know how to drive and you can drive. There are a lot of people out there behind the wheel who aren't good drivers, and they hit those landscaping trucks and they panic. And they don't know what to do, and you can see it, and they stop, and you can see them sitting there thinking, how am I going to get around this? That's where the problem is. If you're a decent driver, it's not an issue, there's enough room. The roads aren't as narrow as they seem. I mean, I have an F-three-fifty dually, I drive these back roads. There's more room on these roads than you know, but again, that's if you know how to drive. But I know when I'm coming down the road sometimes and somebody's coming toward me, they're panicking. And they have plenty of room to get around, but you can see they're in a panic. So part of it is just, you don't have, you have some good drivers and you have some drivers that aren't good. And when the drivers who aren't good, these landscaping trucks, they, they panic.
Well, to me, that's, that's not an issue on Snyder Town or Linville Road.
I'd like to bring up another point, and it includes Linville Road. When you come out on Snyder Town and you want to make a left-hand turn, the people coming down Linville also have a bit of a hill, and they are really... And they are really speeding down there. There've been many close accidents there, but none that I know of. But, um, I've, I've had a few problems and, um, I don't know what we can do about that either unless there was a sign at the top of the hill on Linville, if they would even read it and listen, I'm not sure. But that is a little bit of a issue right there. And sometimes the shrubbery on the right, you can't see real well without pulling out a little bit.
The old mill house on the corner of Linville and Snyder Town, um, they have a, a arbor bite that have gotten very big. And they had to put a new stop sign on the other side, uh, if we're going, you know, Snyder Town to, to Linville and make the left. They had to put another stop sign on the other side of the road because the shrubbery is covering, uh, the other stop sign.
Who maintains that shrubbery?
I, I, yeah, I asked him to cut those arbor biting back, cause he'll probably prefer the way he does it than the way we do it. Cause they're in the right of way and they're very big and technically they should come out. But that's like his fence that blocks his house. So I've asked him several times to cut them back to try to avoid getting too heated because really they should come out.
They should come out.
And does he?
Not all of them.
Does he follow your request?
He cuts them back very minimally.
You can't see the stop sign on the, on the right side. They put another stop sign on the left side.
Because it's just an odd how it, how it's a corner to come around. So we doubled the stop signs just to make sure. And I've spoken to him a couple times to get him to cut back.
Oh, and while I'm thinking about it, uh, are we into the open comment?
No, no, go ahead. It's fine. Keep going.
Also, uh, the, the Linville Church, uh, from Linville Road to thirty-one, the Linville Church, they have some shrubbery there which is hard to see to make the, the left or the right onto Route thirty-one from Linville Road.
It's gonna be a station.
And sometimes they put signs up for their turkey dinners or whatever. And because I drive a pickup truck, I can see over it. My wife has the regular car. And it's, uh, Linville Church, uh, I think they need to open that a little bit. Make sure we have a good view of Route thirty-one, uh, at Linville Road. So just a comment. So, let's stop there.
Christian?
Yes.
Suzanne Parsons, I'm a member of Linville Church. And I live on Snyder Town Road. But, no, um, just it's kind of ironic that the road department has taken away probably about four or five feet of the front of the church through the years. So that's about all we have left. So, or we won't be able to get up the steps anymore. So I'm not sure what we can do except try to keep it trimmed down.
Keep it trimmed down. That would help.
Can you just identify yourself with the tape, please? Thank you.
Suzanne Parsons.
She's the tape. I'm the pain in...
Suzanne Parsons, Snyder Town Road. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Is the determination that you're gonna do Snyder Town Road this year or not?
We're not looking to do anything this year because it's too late. What we would be looking to do is, uh, roads come ideally, I guess, in the spring.
Okay.
Well, summer.
Early summer. Summer to fall. Cause we have to have that prep time.
Summer.
Yeah, okay. We might be able to, you know, either way, that prep work needs to be done, whether we chip seal these roads or not. So if we get lucky enough to have a nice fall, some just not mind done. Otherwise, we have to waste the spring. Hopefully, everything falls in line. It doesn't rain every other day, we can get, get rolling.
The actions we could take now are start, start the prep works and start the bidding process. Cause my understanding is from earlier conversation, you'd prefer we bid this as opposed to use the, the, uh, venues that are associated with the county.
Yeah, it's, it's the township's purview obviously, but, um, just based on some recent past experience, I would recommend, I think you get a, a more competitive price if you put a little bid package together and bid it out on your own. You can get more competition for the work. Uh, and depending on what time of year you bid it out, you're gonna get better unit prices ideally. So I, I would, if the town chose to, to go that route, I would recommend trying to bid it at the latest, maybe early springtime. Maybe even wintertime.
If we had a hundred thousand, you could do Snyder Town, Woodsville, Cider Mill, and Bounce Station. We have to hop over Bouncey and then that would move to the top of the list for the next round. But those four I just said are a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and if you recall, I brought up after my meeting with the Department of Transportation, they recommended a state bank that has interest rates lower than bonding. And remember I gave that information to Margaret. So I think we ought to revisit that in this context. Because if we could put a package together that we think is at a substantial enough size that really gets us maximum leverage, we may wanna borrow some money out of that, that state bank. And then just pay it off over a multi-year period.
Yeah, that's a brand-new program that the state just released. And I think it's, it's the state's way of recognizing that a lot of towns really don't improve their roads unless they get a DOT grant, which is what you were lucky enough to get for, for Ridge Road and some Rye Roads. But at most you may get one a year, but most towns don't even get an annual grant. And then there's, there's that drop-off. So they've, they've started this new program as a way to give more attractive financing options to, to towns to try to encourage them to do roadwork. I mean, I can, I don't know how much information has been given to, to the committee, but I can also gather some info on my end and lay it out for you guys on the program.
I shared some information with our CFO. And my understanding, it's basically kinda like a line of credit at a much lower rate than you would get on the bond market.
Right.
And there's none of the soft costs associated with bond. So it seemed to be a very straightforward way of, of financing.
I just don't know off the top of my head if there's certain restrictions or types of projects that do and don't qualify, but I'm happy to take a look at that and let you guys know.
Well, the key, the key also is, what is the term of the loan? Maturity date. You know, a fifteen or twenty-year loan is very different than a three-year loan. You borrow fifty thousand and you have to pay it back over twenty years. You're talking two thousand five hundred a year plus whatever interest you have. That's very different than if you borrow fifty thousand and you have to pay it back in two years. The other question is, are there sources of funding for roads that we have not explored in East Danwall? Have we turned over every stone in terms of grants, interest-free loans, or any other sources of funding to do roads?
I want a pizza.
Don't know the answer to that. I don't know the past history of, of what grants have been explored. But to be honest with you, there, there are really not a lot of grant opportunities out there for roads. There are, when you start including utilities, if you have, you know, a small water system or sewer system, then that would open you up to more opportunities. But the big ones are, are the DOT grants. Uh, there are discretionary aid grants, local, they call them local aid infrastructure, uh, fund grants through DOT. And those are really, they're sort of meant more for emergency-type projects. So you have the local aid grants, uh, through DOT. You now have the new I-Bank. And then you have some federal aid programs. You have safe routes, safe routes to school programs, but that involves walking to school. So the road grants are limited. They really are.
Are there any of the county offers that we haven't qualified or tested?
Certainly, we can certainly explore it. Certainly explore.
Let's do that. Let's spend a little time, cause we've been exploring grants for Klossen Park and an idea has come across the table largely by accident, but we stumbled onto it. Where we're pursuing it now, it may allow us to do certain improvements in Klossen Park. Where we borrow now and then tap into this grant money to pay back the borrowings. Um, so I'd like to try to think of creative ways to come up with money to do the roads. Cause we have to do something. We can't just continue to sit back and do nothing. The roads are falling apart. And at some point, these roads where we can extend the life with chip seal, if we don't chip seal them, they're gonna be on, be beyond chip sealed. And that becomes a much, much more expensive proposition. So we have to figure out ways to try to get this done without having to kill the residents with higher taxes.
You know, another route that some municipalities take, at least in, in a particular region of New Jersey, Hundred and Included, is being a member of certain co-ops, like the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council. And that, that gives you access to pre-bid items. So you don't have to publicly bid. As long as you're a member of the co-op, then you can use any of those, uh, contract items. And included in that is milling and paving typically at a, typically about thirty, thirty percent or so cheaper than what you might see on the public bidding ends. So I think it's a thousand or twelve hundred dollars a year for a municipality to be a member. But you can also realize some pretty significant cost savings, uh, you know, depending on the type of project you go after.
The only, the, the issue I have with that, and I think Jason, you and I may have talked about this probably back in January, um, the quality of the contractors. I mean, we go out to bid and we have some ability to choose, not unlimited ability as I understand it, but we have some ability to choose based on the quality of the contractor. When you go into these co-ops, it's the contractor and the co-op. I'm fine with that if we're comfortable with the contractor and the co-op. But I'd wanna make sure we're comfortable with the contractor and the co-op.
Well, that's just that you, you know, going into it as you're considering whether or not to use them, you know who the contractor is. They bid it out annually, every year. So if you wanted to explore that avenue for a particular road or, or several roads, we would know going into it who that contractor is. Now, of course, there's always, you know, typically it's like a Tilcon or a Chifano who's enormous. And the quality of work honestly varies from crew to crew. Um, but you have, you have a handle on who the company is and, you know, just past, past experience, how good they are. But you're absolutely right. Um, there is that uncertainty.
I, I'd like to try to get creative here and figure out ways to fund this work. Because, um, at fifty thousand dollars a year, it would take over five years to do the roads on this list. And this list is only half the list of what we need to do. And some of these roads, five years from now, probably aren't gonna be chip sealed.
We have, like, you know, we have roads now that are not.
Bouncey isn't gonna wait five years.
No, and you have the subdivisions and some of these other roads that are just beyond that we haven't even really talked about. I mean, I, I put a, a list together for Bill and I to look at of every road and it's kind of its condition from chip sealable to maybe we could chip seal it with some extensive work to, it's just too far gone. You know, we need to look at other options.
So we have to start getting creative here in figuring out how to fund this. Yeah. And, I mean, we'll undertake the project here, up here. We just need the information. And then we'll work on trying to come up with the money. But whatever information you guys can provide, let's get that carried.
Do you have another question?
Yes. And, and this is directed to you. Um, and I know you're maybe not relatively new, but in, uh, two thousand seven, as you said, three quarters of Snyder Town Road was paved. The other part where we're at that wasn't paved, what was the original component of that?
There was, there's blacktop there, but it's starting to, they call that reveling, like the layers are peeling off, kinda like.
Okay, all right.
Like acne. If you have acne, there's pieces going off of that.
So, uh, my question is, is that if all of Snyder Town Road is worth chip sealing, and that's, uh, about a four to five year, uh, once it's done, to preserve the road for four to five years, well, four to five years from now, can it be re-chip sealed?
Yes, that's, that's the ideal thing. You try to get, like, I'm sure you remember back when I was in grammar school here and the guys would chip seal the road every two to three. And they got five years and they got spread out more and more. That's the thing. Once you, you can stabilize that base and you keep putting that wear surface on top so the, the, the subgrade's not getting wore, is not exposed to the weather and the water.
Four or five years, we have to do this again.
Five.
Weather permitting.
And, and budget permitting, but you wanna get some kind of cycle going or it's repeated every so many years.
And a lot less expensive, uh, to build this way and to tear the whole thing up and do it.
Jason, wouldn't Snyder Town maybe go a little longer because it doesn't get hit with the sun as hard?
No, it actually hurts it because, because it, it, right, it doesn't have the oxidation, but it has the ice and water and refreeze problem. You, you.
Never dries out.
There, there is times when you get those like one-inch snows and it doesn't really stick on any of the roads. You know you have to go to Snyder Town because there's an inch of snow on it. And you might have to plow Snyder Town and no other road in township. It's just, it just gets no sun, so it retains no heat from the sun during the day and easily ices over. So then you use more salt. It gets the little bit of melt from the salt and then the refreeze and it's down to cracks. That, that road before they paved it was horrible. You know, cause I saw it before it was paved in two thousand. It was horrible.
It was dirt. They used to put calcium chloride down.
I mean, there were some monstrous holes and it was, it was just horrible. So the fact that it's lasted in the condition it is, this don't surprise me to be honest with you.
I have a comment to make. It's a little off, but it's still part of the road. The little bridge at Snyder Town, I looked today to see if I could see a year on there. I, I don't see anything. And the concrete is pretty much breaking apart a little bit. But if you look upstream, the right-hand side that usually has a wall, a stone wall of some kind, the one on the right is in the water and has been in the water for.
Yeah, we'll notify the county. All the bridges, just so you know, all the bridges are owned by the county and they maintain them, but I'll let them know.
Yeah, right by the mill house, first of all.
Is that a bridge or is it a culvert?
Either way, it's a bridge.
And it gets flooded on occasion.
Yes, I've seen the water come up over that down.
Well, the township did a very good job of, uh, getting the, the cat.
Diverting the water.
Yeah, to divert the water, uh, down, down to a drain right by the mill house. And that was a good job. We haven't had that water level up since. And that was sandy or, uh...
That was after, tropical storm we had after that, yeah. Yeah, it took a piece of the road right out.
Yeah.
Is that our friend Matthews?
I lost track of all of the names.
At the engineer, at the county.
The one we were dealing with, the Lindberg?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Well, I would just notify the bridge department. Um, there's a couple of guys I talked to up there that are easier to get a hold of.
Okay, why don't we, I know we've heard from folks on Snyder Town Road, so why don't we just, if there's anyone else in the, uh, in the audience who has any comments on tonight's discussion? I see, I see a hand.
I think it belongs to Francis.
It's the munchkin. Oh, God. Mr. DeMille, am I not ready for a close-up?
Uh, Francis Gavigan, one, two, three, Wartsville Road. Uh, want, I think it's great that you are not only taking a proactive approach to this, but you're using metrics, you're using common sense, not who yells the loudest. And congratulations. I've not seen your faces come back the second Thursday of the month. It's lonely up here. Um, but in terms of the roads, I don't know what part of Wartsville Road you had the speeding problem. But where I am, I had a horse killed by a guy who'd been out drinking and hunting, not the best thing. Um, and around dusk comes flying up the road, drifts off the road, hits the horse so hard that his roof pinned up and her profile was stenciled into it. Tracks the whole nine yards. She got up, ran over, died. I didn't know. I come home, I can't find a horse. And I'm going thermonuclear, ah! Two doors down from me is a young family and their front door is as far from Wartsville Road as that window. The school bus stops there. I'm at the top of the hill. There is that great hill coming up from Rock Town Road if you're a motorcyclist and you hate it if you're a bicyclist, but it's a great place to practice your wheelies. If you're coming in the other direction, oh, look, there's the valley. Oh, we don't forget the people. It could take me ten minutes to get out of the driveway, much less to the mailbox. Carrying a large five-pound rock sometimes helps. Further down, two doors down further is, I believe, your former neighbor who bought the Crevoshuk property. Another school bus. That little hamlet, once known, I think, as Mink Town and then Unionville and all of that stuff. There are more houses and residents and kids than there are in Mercer County on five seventy-nine. If you've gone that little stretch of 579 where Mount Aerie Harberton comes in, there's about two houses, a church, and a graveyard. But they get a police presence, they've got the sign, twenty-five miles an hour. Occasionally, there is a policeman there who issues tickets. And the people that I followed back from Philly today, they've all had their come-to-Jesus moment. They obey it. We don't need twenty-four-hour-a-day police presence. We may not be able to get West Amwell. But I'm sure if there's some outreach to the state police, and I will plug in a coffee pot and provide the donuts, if that's an incentive, and there's a nice circular driveway, to where even if we could get some occasional presence, but first, we've got to get the county to lower the speed limit the way they did in this stretch of Wartsville Road, and the way they did up in Little York and other places where maybe people's voices carried a little bit further. It's not all what you, what I've heard for ten years now from the county is, well, there's a calculation, and we put it out, we do counts in the eighty-five percentile, wah-wah, wah-wah, and all of that stuff. Give you a heads up. I'm going to be walking Wartsville Road, and I don't walk so good, with a petition. So heads up to the county and everybody else, and I don't think there'll be a problem getting people to sign it, to ask them, at least in the hamlet areas, starting just past Losi Road at that curve that's already marked as thirty-five miles an hour suggested, to make that. And down, you know, further down along the highway of Wartsville Road or towards actual Wartsville, to put little microcosms of lowering the speed. And if we open our land to hunters, otherwise known as Redden Township Police, who share roads with them, Delaware Township Police, Hopewell Township Police, State Police, or whatever, and you catch them, you find them, you got the money, it modifies behavior. But the first step is to lower the speed limits and to hopefully, because, you know, we're, you know, there's, what, three kids now within a thousand feet. And I don't want any family to go through what I went through finding my dead child. And if you've ever wondered the backstory as to why I come up here and say, you got to lower the speed limit, that's it. And the bicyclists, the good ones, the bad ones, and the tourists with the baskets. They huff, and they puff, and they stop in the road, or they stop on my front lawn, and they don't have enough sense to get out of the way of a bird flying overhead, much less cars flying up and down the hill and being distracted by beautiful views. And I imagine there are other areas of the township that a justification can be made for lowering the speed limit. Why does the speed limit drop once you get past East Amwell heading into Delaware Township? And it's not just at the school, the speed does go down. So I think a wider conversation with the county and maybe Mr. Matthews, and maybe have a forum where members of the public can communicate their feelings may get the something's attention, and maybe we can get something down, because it's also Dear Central and things like that. It may not stop them all, but if it stops a handful, you know, one person gets it, and then five people hear about it. People slow going over Rileyville Road into Hopewell, because at times, the police are there. I commute that road every day. I've only seen an officer once or twice, but the speed limit of twenty-five by the graveyard is adhered to pretty much every day. So that's, that's my two cents. Come back, all of you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Thanks a lot, guys.
Good night.
Thanks for coming. Okay, do we need more comments or questions? So I think what I'd like to suggest is we have a couple of actions. One is, I think we should at least, for lack of other information, at least accept this prioritized list of at least an initial plan. Obviously, we'd like some more data, but, and allow Jason to begin the process of planning to do the prep work. In addition, I think we ought to start thinking about putting together the appropriate bid package for a sizable chunk of this. And I think we ought to reach out to Margaret about financing, what will be available, if we carry with this year to next, if we maintain a fairly flat budget, and other mechanisms, and see how much of this we could attack. And set a plan to, basically, we begin to take this on for a, what do you suggest, spring to summer?
I'd say summer to fall, because I got to have that prep time, you know. Like I said in the one email, the ideal thing is prep for this year, chip seal next year. But that's going to take a little time to get that forehead, and hopefully, something we can, you know.
I'd say you should begin the process of prepping in the season.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, if weather plays in our favor and we get a mild fall, I'd plan to, no, this stuff needs to be done anyway, you know. So it's definitely work we have planned, if it just please stop raining.
And then, Bill, when will you and Jason have more concrete recommendations on the grant for Lindale and Willisworth Road?
Well, I think it's a question of determining which road, obviously, we want to go after, and then, once we've pinpointed the road, how much of that road do we think we can apply for within what we think is a decent grant application? Jason and I actually met this morning, and we drove Lindale. Right now, on the surface, we feel like Lindale is a good candidate for a couple reasons. One, the town's already invested in improving what they call that middle section with drainage and resurfacing. The road connects to Route 31 on one end, has a fair amount of traffic, and it really is in poor condition. So it meets a lot of the metrics that DOT looks at for a viable candidate. That's not to say that there aren't other candidates out there. I'm certainly open to suggestions if anybody has any other roads that they want us to take a peek at, but, you know, right now, I think we're both comfortable to recommend that Lindale would be something that, you know, that the committee considers. But we're open to other suggestions. We would need to have a resolution of support submitted to DOT within thirty days of when the application is due. So you don't actually have to have the resolution in advance. We just need to have a consensus of what road we're going to apply for.
Well, since I'm a resident of Lindale Road, I'll defer to the rest of the township committee to make that recommendation, incidentally.
October eighth.
Oh, you're going to whip in three weeks.
So we get a couple, maybe three weeks or so. The application is not, it's, it's not a huge lift completing the application. It's a cost estimate, photos, location map, and really a narrative explaining the condition of the road, why we think it's a good candidate for grant money, what benefits the town will realize by improving the road.
But the resolution you need from the township committee, you need it by the eighth?
The resolution, it's a resolution in support of submitting the application. Ironically, you need to submit it within thirty days. So I would not need the resolution by the eighth. I need it within thirty days so I can then forward it to DOT.
Well, we're just good at the next meeting. So our next meeting is the eleventh, so if you have it in by the eighth, you'll have made the decision by the eighth. Terry can prepare the resolution, and we can adopt it.
There's a, the resolution is a template on Sage.
Perfect.
DOT gives us the.
I thought you, I'm just saying how we did it in the past. They submitted the application by certain dates, and the township committee kind of guided you now if you have to have something by the eighth, because we're not meeting until the eleventh.
Right.
So then we'll do the resolution after you submit, though.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm okay with Lindale.
As long as there's a consensus on what we want to do, or if you want to defer to us.
I would defer to you.
And you recommend Lindale, right?
Lindale is our recommendation right now.
From Rock Town to hopefully Mountain at least half, because it is longer, you know, like, which.
How long is that section you're recommending, right there?
I'd have, I have to, I don't know how long it is.
So the section going not, you had said from 31.
Well, no, I mentioned that we thought Lindale was a good candidate because it connects to 31. But that lower section is in really poor condition, and I think ultimately, we'd be looking at a phased approach here. To do the entire stretch right now, we wouldn't get nearly half them.
But I agree. I'm on the upper section, and that's why I thought you were talking about that. No, I do agree, the lower section.
No, that lower. Done all that patching, you know, get that covered up, and get those seams off, you know, because every time it breaks, it breaks a seam on the patch, because that's where the water's getting, so get that, you know, sealed up, get the crown back on the road, the water off, you know, get shaped up the way it's supposed to.
Isn't there more than one bridge, though, down there as well, on that end of Lindale?
There's a bridge right at the beginning at Rock Town, yeah.
Oh, right, right, right.
Because remember, that's Rock Town, that technically goes out to Inte.
Okay, and does that impact your process at all?
And as long as the bridge is in good repair, we work with the county. The county has no problem with us resurfacing the road right over the bridge. If it was in state repair, or if it's disrepair, or if the county had plans to replace it in the very near future, we may elect to adjust the limits of the road just to avoid it. But I don't think that's the case here.
If your recommendation is Lindale, I'm happy to go with your recommendation.
Well, you're the experts, Mike. I'm fine, but I defer to you guys, and that's perfectly acceptable.
We have consensus.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Do you guys have any questions for us?
Just so you know, I know Rick and I talked, we did that mastic ceiling in Danbury, so if you get a chance to go over there and look, it's near Allison's house. You'll see it's really a dark black right now because it's so fresh, but that's the other material that fills those cracks an inch and a half or wider. I mean, we filled cracks sixteen inches wide, that material.
You remember we walked, those cracks were nasty.
Yeah, so if you get a chance, you know, you go over that way, just check it out. That is on state contract.
What's involved in using that as an ongoing process? Is it a contract with a vendor, or you do it yourself?
We rent the machine and buy the material. Yeah, but it's on that, the mastic machine, which is for the big cracks, is on state contract. The machine for the smaller cracks is not on state contract that we'd have to get close for. We did six of those large cracks, and then we put about nine hundred pounds of material down in about three hours. So it was, uh.
And they found two children who are on them.
Listening. Any other comments? Second, you have?
Full favor?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.